Okay. Good evening and welcome to the July 7, 2015 Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education meeting. Since this is the annual organization meeting, it is the district clerk's responsibility to open the meeting until a board president is elected. The organization meeting will also be followed by a regular board meeting. So the July 7 meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're going to move to the motion for executive session. May I please have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment or future employment of particular persons?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The board is now in executive session. Okay, I think we're ready to begin. May I please have a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. At this time, I would like to congratulate Stephen Mintermeyer and Perry Sheldon for their reelection to the Board of Education for another three-year term of office. Mr. Mintermeyer-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Sheldon have both been provided with their oath of office statement. So if you could please stand and raise your right hands. Mr. Mintermeyer, if you could recite the oath of office.
I, Stephen Mintermeyer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee on the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, according to the best of my ability.
Mr. Sheldon?
Ditto. Oh, no. Okay.
I, Perry Sheldon, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee on the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, according to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. We'll have you sign the oath book at the end of the meeting. So per the district's policy, the election of Board President and Vice President takes place by paper ballot. The board has been supplied with paper ballots, colored, blue for President and yellow for Vice President. If you can just rip off one top piece to vote on, that would be appreciated. May I have a nomination for President of the Board of Education, please?
Debbie, I'd like to nominate Doug Heater to return as Board President for this year. He's done an outstanding job over the years he's been there, and as a retired person, he has extra time to devote to this job, and he goes a little nutsy, but he does devote an awful lot of time to this job.
Thank you.
I second it.
Any other nominations?
Can we make a motion to close the nominations?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Would you please mark your ballots for the Board President and pass them to me?
Does spelling count?
Mr. Duffy for Doug Heater. Mr. Heater for Doug Heater. Mr. McGrath for Doug Heater. Mr. Mintermeyer, Mr. Sheldon, and Mr. Sheehan all cast their vote for Doug Heater, so Mr.
Heater unanimously becomes Board President. Congratulations. So I'd like to administer the oath of office to you.
Ready? I, Doug Heater, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2015-2016 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. You can sign after the meeting as well.
Yep.
So, Mr. Heater, you may now take over the meeting and request nominations for Board Vice President.
At this time, may I have nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Dan Duffy.
I'll second.
Anyone else?
Motion to close nominations?
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I guess we still have to go through and thing, so if you would fill out your forms. From the man who said ditto, yes.
You gotta have levity.
This is true. This is true. But I thought I supplied that.
You gotta have levity. Levity or gravity.
There you go.
Next year, you get smaller paper.
Thicker paper.
I can still get seven folds.
I think we'll just say unanimous for Mr. Duffy. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the confidence that you've placed in both of us, and I know I've enjoyed the extra duties, and as Dan said, I am retired and I do have time, and I thank you all, so.
The only thing we've never got clarification on is whether your wife appreciates you being out of the house this much. She may be sponsoring you behind your back.
She gets to go to-
Call and told me to-
She gets to go to-
Yeah.
She gets to go to book club once a month. That's what she gets.
Compared to what you get to do? Doesn't quite seem.
I, Daniel Duffy, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2015-16 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Dan. May I, at this time, have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. May I have a motion for 701? Excuse me. This is the consent agenda for the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And if anybody needs to know what each item is, it is in the agenda. That brings us down to District Clerk Oath of Office. I might as well stand up here for this.
I, Deborah Rosen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the Board of Education for the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2015-16 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And the best of those abilities is quite effective. We appreciate everything that you do for the board, and we hope we maintain that relationship for quite some time. Should we welcome Linda to the board, Dan? Are you gonna do that?
Is she down here for the personnel?
Okay.
No, she's-
Okay, just one.
Yes.
Is she buried in there?
Yes.
She's on the- I was just trying to look for that, so yes.
Okay. Cat's out of the bag.
We can both go for this one. And then, was the interim?
Not yet. It's farther down. Yeah, we did the general business, or the normal reorganization. There's another one down the line, another-
People might notice that there's somebody new at the table, that's all.
So, later on this evening, we will make it official pending the vote of the board, which is true, but we would like to welcome Linda Steinberg. She is on the agenda later this evening to be appointed as the School Business Manager. The title is School Business Manager II. We spent a great deal of time examining this when we were looking at our restructuring. We restructured and determined through the budget process that we could eliminate the position of the Assistant Superintendent for Business, and we could replace that with a School Business Manager II position. We are very, very pleased that Linda was interested, applied, and, you know, hands down receives our 100% endorsement to begin that position as of this evening following the vote. Linda is certainly capable. She's been our treasurer for, what, four years now? Three and a half. And I know the board members will recall that she followed someone who was less than capable and put forth a tremendous effort to straighten out our books. She has also obtained all the qualifications and education that she needs for the School Business Manager II position. Additionally, she was accepted into the Leadership Duchess Program, and she was there this evening, so she'll be out and about in the community and really being part of some really great things. She'll be doing also a year-long, and I forget what it's called, Linda.
Through ASBO?
Yes.
Leadership Academy, through the State Business Officials Organization?
And, yes, and so that will directly further train her and give her a support system for the job. So later on, we will officially welcome you, but we do have you on the agenda, so we wanted to point it out right now.
We already approved this one, if you want to.
Okay, that was the one we approved. So that was what I was trying to think. So, because Linda was the treasurer, and by law, you have to have a treasurer at all times, we needed to make sure that we had somebody in place, and we've been very fortunate that internally, we have a senior accountant, Barbara Scarpino, and to help us through this transition, knowing that, you know, in a few minutes Linda will vacate the treasurer's position, we are recommending Barbara Scarpino, she's right here, to be the interim treasurer, and as we go through the process of securing and advertising and filling the treasurer's position. So we really want to thank Barbara. Linda has worked very closely with Barbara and has full confidence that Barbara is fully capable of helping us through this transition. For those of you that may not know, the district treasurer reports directly to the Board of Education. It's part of the separation of duties to make sure that all of our accounting and finances, we have some checks and balances, so for her role as interim treasurer, Barbara will report directly to the Board of Education, as Linda did for the past three and a half years.
Thank you. Okay, that gets us to 9.1, 01. Have a motion for item 9.01, approve meal prices for the district for the coming year.
Doug, did we miss the District Clerk Oath of Office?
Yeah. Yeah, we did that.
We did it.
We didn't, you missed.
We didn't, you missed.
Yeah.
Okay.
She did it. I'm gonna do it again.
Here, just follow the ball.
That's good. You know, keep watch on me, because you know how I miss, I step over things, I do. And I have no problem with that. Okay. Do we have a movement, a second, on the meal prices?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm curious about whether this is any change from prior year.
I believe that's the same, isn't it?
I think this year is the same. We added a couple of things, so we'll just get to that page. Because I can't see it on my screen because of the minutes. None of the prices changed, however, in previous years, we did not list the adult breakfast or the breakfast for all non-reduced students, so there's a couple of additions.
Oh, there is a difference. Which is right.
No, you're looking, you haven't scrolled down all the way. So we just added the bottom two lines.
Oh, yeah.
Otherwise, all the prices have stayed the same.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 9.02. As delayed in the agenda, please. This is for the barring resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote? You want to call a roll, or you want me to?
No, I'll do it. Mr. Heater?
Aye.
Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Danielson?
Aye.
Mr. McGrath?
Aye.
Mr. Mintermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Sheehan?
Aye.
And Mr. Sheldon.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a motion for 9.03, terms and condition of employment for the Assistant Superintendents for this next school year, as noted in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And motion for 9.04, designation of board member to serve on the district leadership team.
So moved. Second.
Are these aren't really motions?
We need a name, right?
Yeah, these are-
One of those-
Your designation.
Designations, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that a new?
Yes, this was all part of my presentation where we're going to do a full-year-long, big, broad-based, community strategic planning, and right now, Jeff Danielson has been serving on the district leadership team, Doug Heater has been serving on the academic strategic planning committee, and the other person we looked at was Mr. Sheldon as a pullover from the facilities steering forum, but, so those are the proposals, and they have all expressed that they're interested in continuing.
Okay.
I'll support that.
That's good. So we don't have to vote or anything on these, right? Yes. Do we have to vote?
Yeah, we have a motion, so just-
Oh, I know, I know.
Just restate the names, and then we just vote on the whole motion.
Okay.
So it's gonna be-
Jeff Danielson, Doug Heater, and Perry Sheldon.
All right. Now you can call for the vote, just so I know who was voting.
All in favor? Opposed? I was waiting for Perry to put a hand up there. Opposed, you know.
I can pick up.
Okay. 905, designate board members to serve on Audit Committee. In the past year, Mr. Duffy, myself, and Mr. Sheehan were on the Audit Committee.
So moved.
Second.
I will stay on, certainly.
I would like to stay also.
All right. All in favor, the three of us there? Opposed, thank you. A motion for 906, members to serve on the Policies Subcommittee, that was myself and Mr. McGrath last year.
So moved.
I'd like to stay on it, yeah.
You can play that game.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, if they can keep him? Opposed, thank you. And members on the Energy Education Advisory Subcommittee, last year was Mr. McGrath, Mr. Sheehan, and Mr. Sheldon. You want to keep staying on those, or anybody else?
I am prepared to stay on that committee.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And it doesn't need to be three, so if somebody, you know, I mean, I just don't want people to feel obligated because we had three, we need to keep with three. One is fine, two is fine, three is fine, four is out of the question.
Four is not.
Zero is probably out of the question, although we could figure something out.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed, thank you.
Who's on that one?
Anyone know who's on? It's on there. Gary, Kevin, and Perry. We want the 9.08, designate board members to serve on the Comprehensive Health Advisory Subcommittee. Last year, that was Mr. Danielson. Jeff, you want to stay on that?
I'll stay on it.
Anybody else want to?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. 909, membership, board members to serve on the Dutch County School Boards Association Executive Committee, which was Mr. Sheldon last year.
So moved.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm prepared, I will continue.
Second.
All in favor? That's good. I almost feel like we should just say, keep it all, and just... Okay, where are we?
Government.
And I missed putting who that was.
I don't think, I'm not sure we had one. Dan and Doug.
I think we used Dan and Doug last year.
Dan and Doug were drafted, yes.
Yes, we decided we needed the officers.
So moved.
Oh, we didn't do the government liaison, did we?
No, that's the one we're doing.
That's what we're doing now.
That's what we're moving right now. We just got drafted.
And that's the one we didn't actually fill last year.
No, we did, you and Dan.
That's what I thought. You and Dan because of being-
Great job.
We did a great job. Remember, we met, we met once.
We drafted again.
I guess, okay.
I would like to serve that position.
Good, you got my spot.
And just, just so people know, since we're on it, and, you know, there are times when we are called upon to meet with town officials and/or other officials, and we have utilized this, sometimes it's busier than others, so it is a viable position, and we do go to the list when we say, oh, there's a meeting, we think we should find out who's on that committee to come with us.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it goes everything from state officials are one thing, but when you meet with local officials, I think it's, not that it's muscle, but sometimes it's good to just kind of have the elected counterpart kind of send the message that this is how the school district feels, and that way, the quote-unquote "the paid help" doesn't feel like, you know, they're being the bad guy delivering the message, you know, let the elected officials deliver the tough message sometimes that may have to be delivered to a town official or a county official or whoever, so, yeah, it is helpful.
So, you're really saying the President and Vice President should be on it also?
Well, whatever, yeah, and Steve agrees. You can have three.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So you stay on?
So it would be Steve and Dan.
You're staying on?
Um...
Sure, not really.
Sure, why not? I don't know.
He's not fired.
Nothing to do.
We've taken Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Debbie, did you get a second?
I have a-
I just need a vote.
All in favor? Thanks. I have, designate board member to serve on the district negotiations team, last year it was myself and Mr. Mintermeyer, Mr. Danielson, and Kevin, Perry, rather. We kind of, they were served intermittently, at different times, so.
No negotiations? How did that happen?
Yeah. I think it was when we didn't have enough people around to get three. I'd like to stay on it, myself. Steve, you want to stay?
Yeah, I'll stay.
I would like to stay on.
Okay, that's three, that means you can't be on.
That's fine.
Are you sure? I'll give up my spot.
So moved.
Yeah? You can have it.
You're terrific.
So all in favor of the, do we have a second for the?
Second.
Three? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion, designate board member for the Personnel Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
That was myself, Mr. Danielson, and Mr. Sheehan. You want us both stay on? I'll stay on.
Yeah, I'll stand.
All right. And all in favor? Thank you. A member to serve on the Special Education Subcommittee, that was Mr. Duffy and Mr. Danielson.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Welcome aboard again.
Board members serve on the Technology Subcommittee. Last year was Mr. Duffy, myself, and Mr. Mintermeyer. I'd like to keep on it, myself.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand. Before you blink, can you?
And that's the end of the reorganizational meeting. Woo-hoo.
We are reorganized.
I feel so much more organized now.
Yeah.
And hard to see the difference.
It's, is that good, though? Okay, so we're now in the start of a regular meeting, and we have pride. Can I just say one thing, because I'm really embarrassed, I forgot to bring the, because I did mention the two Violet Avenue students who got their thing in the paper, a North Park student, and I forgot the article, and I don't remember the little girl's name, but a fourth grader moving into the fifth grade was also published in the Poughkeepsie Journal, and I apologize to her that I forgot to bring the article with me, it's still sitting on my desk.
Do you know when it was? Do you remember how long ago it was?
Was that?
Do you remember how long ago it was? The article?
It was a good three or four weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
It was quite a, no, it was after the last, no, it was after the last meeting, so about three weeks ago.
Because I could, I had the, I get that thing on tablet, I would find it if it was like in the last day or so, so I could give you the name, but that's too much digging.
I'm always, I'm always pleased when I see people that read, enjoy the books, and... Oh, any other pride?
Yeah, I think we haven't seen each other since graduation, and-
Oh, it's great. Graduation was really good.
It was fantastic. Yes, we will have Mr. Party back next year, but-
Yeah. Mr. Moser was great.
Unbelievable.
He was really, really good.
Yeah, I just thought it was one of the smoothest, not that we've had any rough ones, but it really, from the soloists who sang at the graduation ceremony, to the speeches by the students, and Doug, and Mr. Party, and Charlie was, they were, Charlie Urban Mead, his was just, he was fantastic, and then Pat Moser was really phenomenal, and I think you will-
I think you will have received a copy, I did send him a copy, Pat Moser on behalf of the district, I'll reach out to Charlie as well, but it was just, it was a really fantastic graduation. We also had opening day this week for our extended school year, and Aviva, do we know how many students we have approximately, or classrooms?
I'll do the math and I'll have it in a minute.
Okay. Well, we have a bunch of students.
No, we have seven classrooms.
Seven classrooms, and we usually, we definitely have smaller, smaller numbers of students in our extended school year classrooms, but as of Monday, we have children back in our buildings. As of next Monday, we open up our summer bridge program and invite even more children, and then 150, and then we also will open up our FDR Summer School. I think we estimate that of our 3,600 students, we have approximately 500 students in one program or another throughout the summer, so we are not closed for business, we are running buses, and we are bringing students in.
It's, um, 56 slots, not all shown up yet.
And we forgot the key of the graduation was, do we all remember?
The weather.
Weather.
Yeah, oh, the weather, the decisions there were, yeah, but the key that was mentioned several times during the graduation ceremony was, we, ceremony and celebrate.
Ceremony.
Ceremony.
More celebration.
And we hadn't heard, at least I hadn't heard it, but the kids had heard it several times, and the reaction the first time it occurred was dramatic.
And they were pretty, you know, and I'll say...
They were good.
They were good.
They were really good.
I mean, the first really terrifically launched beach balls occurred when the last student's name was called and given.
Right, and that's, you know...
That's never happened.
That's all, you know, I've ever asked for is some reasonable decorum until it's appropriate to, you know, and so I was really proud of the kids, and even though one of them was mine, I'll say it, I think they did a nice job of really maintaining, you know, decorum until it was appropriate to celebrate.
I learned always speak before the students, because otherwise you're gonna look really bad.
Yes. It's amazing, but, and a nice touch, I mean, inviting the second student to, to sing a tribute for our veterans, and mentioning the veterans was a significant addition to our program and a very, very appropriate one.
No, just while we're still on this topic, also new this year, that was a part of my thing, but new this year was having the top 20 on stage.
Yeah, it was nice.
That was real nice.
And alphabetical order.
Alphabet, oh, yes.
It was, it was much easier to know when somebody was coming up.
Yeah, that was appreciated.
The kids didn't particularly like it, but, boy, it made it easier for the parents.
Well, I hate to say it, but that may have contributed to some of the...
Yeah, well, I'm sure it did. I'm sure it did.
I don't know you, so I'll behave myself, but no, you know, I think it was, yeah, it was good.
All right, any other prideful moments? Do we have anything for the superintendents required?
Um, yeah, actually, just tragically, we were informed that Dylan Farrell, I have to look up his name, Feller, sorry, Dylan Feller, we just learned today, 2013 graduate was tragically died last evening in Rhinebeck, and I think there are very few details out there, but our heartfelt condolences to the family, where I've reached out to Barbara Marine, because, you know, he, he is a very recent graduate, so that anything that, you know, we might wanna do to reach out to, you know, it is two years, so maybe not our existing students, but, you know, we certainly have a lot of connections with families and friends, and anything that we can do to support them, so unfortunately, that's just really, really sadness.
We actually have one other, Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to also, I just saw it in the paper today, John Quimby, who was a longtime teacher, passed away.
Union president.
He was union, HPTA president, but just a great teacher, he served as a, well, they used to call it industrial arts teacher, and then also a guidance counselor in his later years, when he retired, he retired in 2000?
2000.
Yeah, yeah, he and my dad were colleagues for a long time, they taught driver ed together in various capacities in different places, and, you know, I think, you know, my father counted John among his friends, and, you know, and he was just an all-around good guy, you know, four grown children, several grandchildren, you know, and his wife, so it just, it was sad to see that in the paper today. My dad had indicated he was having some difficult health issues a couple of weeks ago, and I was kinda shocked, and then when I opened the paper today, it was, you know, more so, yeah, so...
I didn't see that, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Twelve point oh two, Core with an update on Common Core. The uncommon core.
Good evening, everyone. Let me make sure we're turned on here. Let's go to the first slide, though. Hmm, I'm not sure where the cover is. However, welcome, I'm here to just provide another update on what our implementation of the Common Core looks like, and just as a reminder, I know everyone is aware, but I'll share again that part of the rationale for the implementation of the Common Core standards in New York State is to, as best as possible, provide support so our students will be both college and career-ready. Our instructional shifts that are demanded by the Common Core are in both literacy and in math, and we've, we've shared those before. What's most important is what's happening now. Oh, I see, we're somewhat out of order. There we go. So, implementation in Hyde Park has included a number of things, starting with the professional learning opportunities that we've made available to our staff. Certainly, we've done awareness level, skill development, and leadership development sessions for teachers and administrators. I would say we're well past the awareness level at this point, and most of our work is focused now on developing skills that teachers will use in the classroom, and on tapping the leadership skills. So when we talk about leadership development, it's not just our instructional leaders who have administrative titles, but also our many teacher leaders who have been tapped for particular learning experiences of their own, and then who are put in positions of supporting their colleagues. Many years ago, our department meetings at the secondary level looked very much like information sharing, and we have shifted that completely to really using that time for additional professional development for teachers. So, all of those meetings, particularly in ELA, math, science, and social studies, are dedicated to reinforcing the strategies that we hope teachers will use, so that students will be successful meeting those new demands of the Common Core. The same thing is happening within our grade-level meetings, we have teacher leaders who facilitate study groups in our different buildings, with that emphasis on the six shifts, critical thinking, and then the use of our new curriculum materials. We've had a really wonderful relationship and partnership with Bard over the last several years, and you heard mention of that, I wanna say, two meetings ago now, from, excuse me, from a couple of our teachers who participated in the style grant, and Deb Kravchuk and Colleen Gilbert spoke with you about their work with STEM and around supporting their peers, and much of that came out of the thinking and writing courses. And this has been an opportunity, using grant funds, for our teachers to take a three-credit graduate-level course at no cost to the teachers and at no cost to the district. So that coursework has been really important, both at Havland and at FDR. Generation Ready is a consultant group that we've used this year to support our teachers at the elementary level. We identified, even as we were creating the new technology plan for next year, a goal of having all of our students reading at or above benchmark by the end of second grade. And so Generation Ready is a group that's coming in and spending time in our classrooms and with our teachers at the elementary level, again, reinforcing what really good, balanced literacy instruction looks like. PD 360 is a web-based professional learning environment, and we've purchased licenses for that program. It allows teachers on their own to, I hope I didn't do that. Yes, it allows teachers on their own to seek out video clips of best practices in classrooms all over the country, classroom clips that have been vetted and really analyzed to make sure that what teachers are looking at is best practice. It also allows for group sharing and group viewing of video material. It allows administrators to recommend and suggest that teachers take a look at different video clips, and along with that are samples of the lesson plans, the opportunity to communicate with the people who posted those video clips. So that's a resource that we're, we're really grappling in and planning on a greater implementation plan for next year. Columbia Teachers College and Leslie University are two wonderful sources for us in terms of our literacy instruction. We have teachers who've attended programs at both those universities over the last couple of years, this summer is no exception, and in the fall, a number of us will be attending the literacy conference at Leslie University in November. I mentioned the style grant, and that grant has allowed us to provide support directly to teachers, to identify teacher and administrator leaders within the district, and to provide stipends for teachers to participate in a number of things. One of the most important right now that I'll mention is the Common Core Evaluation Project, and I'll share some more detail about that in a moment, but in short, we recognized fully that we asked a lot of teachers this year in terms of implementing modules, and really embracing the elements of the Common Core. And through a number of observations and formal and informal conversations, we realized that the feedback we were getting needed to be formalized in another way. So we invited teachers to come together, and this was a K-12 project in ELA and math. We paid teachers a stipend to come together with our directors and talk very openly and honestly about what the implementation of the modules has looked like. We asked them to think about whether or not the pacing that was described in the modules themselves was appropriate, and in cases where the answer was no, we gave teachers the opportunity to create a pacing guide that made more sense to them, and I'll talk again in a little more detail about that. So, in English Language Arts, we have used all of the modules, K-12, we have gathered that feedback from the Implementation and Evaluation Project, and we are in the process of sharing our changes and expectations for next year. So I'll give you a couple of examples. At the elementary level, in kindergarten, first, and second grade, we implemented what's called the literacy listening and learning domains, and these are very rich, very rigorous modules that expose children to a lot of content in social studies, some in science, heavier emphasis on, on social studies, through the use of interactive read-alouds. So teachers are, are reading, they're developing vocabulary with students, they're posing comprehension questions at different levels. In kindergarten, for example, there are 12 domains in that curriculum for teachers to implement with their students. Some of the feedback we heard from teachers was, the content is good, the vocabulary development is great, many of our kids really appreciate and are, are loving the conversation. It cannot be done in the time that we have. We can't do 12 domains, do them well, and do all of the other things that you're asking us to do. So we paid close attention to that, brought the teachers back again, and said, okay, you know, how many of these make sense? We had an administrative team meeting, actually, we had at least three dedicated to this topic, came to a decision about a number that made more sense, and then asked the teachers to take a look at the domains and identify for us which domains they felt were the most appropriate for their grade level for their, for each quarter. So, very purposeful gathering of input, really hearing feedback, coupling that with our own observations as an administrative team by spending time in classrooms, looking at observations, and then really respecting that the teachers in the classroom are the people doing the work, and who are sitting in front of students every day. So all of that has been brought back together, Jen Kreiser, Amy and I are in the final process of putting all of that together to disseminate for next year. So as you see on the right, rather than 12 mandated domains at the elementary level, there will be one per quarter, and every teacher in the district will be doing the same ones each quarter. So, our goal of consistency across the district remains the same, and we're being true to that goal, but it is a much reduced expectation. The domains are part of a balanced literacy program, so we are not suggesting that interactive read-alouds don't need to happen on a regular basis. What we're really providing the teachers with is something that we're all really committed to, which is professional guidance, as well as professional discretion and decision-making. So we're, we're balancing that out in a way that we didn't do, quite frankly, in the 14, 15 school year. And I, I should say that in many cases, one year's implementation of something would not result in recommendations for dramatic change. I would suggest that in many, many cases, that would be a very bad idea, to do something for one year and then say, never mind. In this case, what we really felt was that based on all of the observations and feedback and our belief about the impact that those expectations were having on teachers and students, we knew enough to make the changes that we're making, and we'll continue to evaluate and continue to massage those expectations as we learn more, but we all agreed that walking into September, we could not ask teachers to do all the same things that we asked them to do a year ago. So this is the result of that work, and I should keep emphasizing that the changes we're talking about are at elementary. I wanna make sure I focused on all of those things. The last bullet continues to be very important, the focus on differentiated instruction is one that has been reiterated in all of our internal reviews, in our observations, in the feedback we've received from state education department officials and others. One of the things that happened this year and last, as teachers were first exploring the Common Core modules, was that they felt very concerned about doing it right, and so they, they had their modules in front of them, the modules provide a script, in some cases more strict than others, and teachers, being who they are and wanting to do the right thing, did not have the same confidence that they would have under other circumstances to put the module aside and differentiate the way they might think their students require. And in fact, the modules all contain supplemental materials that are very clearly supports for differentiation for students with disabilities, students for whom English is not their primary language. This year, those resources didn't even get touched, so we saw a lot of whole-group instruction that was not differentiated. So while we're providing that greater flexibility next year, there is still an expectation that teachers differentiate. I should mention too, because my first example was really at the K-2 level, at grades three, five, the feedback that we got from teachers was, we, we can and should still do all of the modules. What we need is flexibility within those modules to say, we're not gonna do all of these lessons, these are repetitive, we don't need those. This assessment really isn't linked to the goals and objectives of that unit, so we'd like not to do that. So, again, we got very specific and very detailed input from the teachers about what makes the most sense, and so that will be shared with them prior to the start of school in September. In math, we did much the same process, however, the feedback that we got from teachers was not at all around doing less, it was about the amount of time that teachers need in order to do all of the modules. So we will continue to use those. Teachers at all grade levels, K-12, created pacing guides that they said they feel comfortable with and reflected what reality really was this year. So a module might say, you know, you need five days, if the teachers at that grade level or in that department at the high school said, that's all well and good, but we need nine days, so be it. And we recognize too, that after one year of doing it, you know, some of that... And we recognize too, that after one year of doing it, you know, some of that will happen faster. Same focus on differentiation in math. Our parent outreach this year continued to grow. Events were held in all of our buildings, supported by our BLTs. We had tremendous teacher volunteerism around coming out and supporting those activities. In some cases, those events were followed by invitations for parents to come in and be in their classroom and see what their students were being asked to do. Greg Tang is a national expert on math instruction. He did a full day with us into an evening. He did assemblies with students, he worked with teachers, and he did an evening activity that brought parents in. Some of these things you may have seen, if not, at least the two bullets on the right are on our website. Parents received this year report card guides to go with the elementary report card to explain the differences in how we're assessing. For every math unit, K-12, there is a newsletter, it's just a two-sided document, that explains to parents what the standards are, what the vocabulary is that's being addressed, sample problems, et cetera. And then finally, the BLT at Ralph R. Smith had a very particular focus around the Common Core, and that was around providing video clips of Common Core lessons. And if you bear with me a moment, I'd like to show you one of them, so you can see what kinds of things parents are getting. Just talk amongst yourselves for a minute. Nope, go back. I apologize if this wasn't set up ahead of time.
It's not hyperlinking yet.
You might be able to copy and paste.
That's what I'm attempting here, yeah. I appreciate your patience. I hope we touch sound here. I do know, I don't see, I'm not sure about this speaker somehow, this new machine works. Okay.
Yeah, you know how to make it a big screen.
Oh, thank you. So remember not to help students understand practical relationships, develop algebraic thinking, and that's what we're trying to teach back from that. Build relational understanding, which is foundational for building national markets. And when we say understand practical relationships and build relational understanding, we mean in a picture form like this. So for example, in the beginning, you could do it at home with paper plates or with sticky notes, where let's say you want to show them a hole is the number four. So you can put four sticky notes in a hole, and then have them separate them into parts, like one and three, or you could have them separate them into two and two to show the holes. And sometimes you'll see it done in a horizontal form like the top one, or sometimes you'll see it in a vertical form like on the bottom, but the principle's the same, the hole and then the part and the part. So in kindergarten and early first grade, we use the four, the story of four, which is basically just explaining all the addition facts of four. So you can have four as the hole, and then four and zero makes four, and then we'll switch them out and we'll show three and one makes three and one makes four. And then we switch them out and we can do two and two makes four. We did this for these numbers in ten, and keep them up as anchor charts in the classroom, so they see those basic facts to ten. Then early on, this is in New York State Common Core, this is early first grade, we start doing the pictures and then they start writing the numbers in. So for example, five balls are here, plus two more row over, now there are seven balls. And then the students would make the number bonds match the story, so they would have two and five make up that number of seven. And then down at the bottom, they do the same thing with the frogs. So they have six frogs are here, plus one more half over, now there are seven frogs, and they would make the number bonds stand like six and one makes seven. Then we get a little bit more abstract when they do it with the word problem. So Mary is making a number bracelet with a total of 10 beads. She put three red beads so far, how many more beads does she need to add to the bracelet? So they can do this with a number bond as well. So we know the total is 10 beads. She put on 30 red beads so far, and a lot of times in first grade, we'll start with the pictures, and we'll draw the 10, and then we'll have the three. But their job is to figure out what number should go in here, so we'll figure out that three plus seven will equal the total of 10. Now as we move on, number bonds can also be used in the upper grades. So for example, in the first one, rather than setting up a problem going up and down, doing algorithm like you may have seen in the past, we can do the number bonds to solve it going horizontally with like this. So if you know that we only need eight more to make 300 right here, you can break this apart, so 119 makes eight, and 111, we have 300, plus 111 equals 411. You can even do it with time too. If I know that 45 minutes only needs another 15 minutes to make it to an hour, then I can break the parts of 35 minutes into 16 minutes and 20 minutes, and I figure out that if 16 minutes plus the 20 minutes, or I can write it one hour, 20 minutes. And we can even do it with fractions too. So for example, we can break the parts of two-thirds into one-third and two-thirds, and then I figure out that this is one, and I have one-third left over. So that was Jen Farren, who was one of our first grade teachers at Ralph R. Smith. And if you go on to Ralph R. Smith. One, and listening, okay. Today, we're going to be thinking about number bonds to 10, and we're going to be having to know that number bonds to 10, and we call it one.
There we go. Sorry. Put the X in the box.
Okay. But I wanted to make sure you saw the efforts that our teachers in the BLT are making to do the parent reach out. So this is an example from Ralph R. Smith. Moving into the next year, you know, what we know is that we have to continue to monitor what the implementation really looks like, continue to get feedback from our teachers, listen and watch carefully and make adjustments over time as needed. We will continue working with Generation Ready with the focus on that goal of students reading on benchmark by the end of second grade. And then, of course, continued analysis of data, including all of the state and local assessments, which will be the next presentation in August when we have all of that back. Okay. I appreciate your patience. I know I went over time, but I did want you to see.
The video was fine.
Oh, thanks.
Any questions?
I do. I know that you have talked about the shifts required by Common Core before. But when I saw the list this time, it seemed kind of odd, because when you look at...
Oh, that's the one that light doesn't come on. It's okay. Your on.
I have to do a sprout with that. Yeah, I'm not coming through the mic system.
It's probably the one that keeps...
No, I'll just work with that mic.
There you go.
So.
When I reviewed...
Is that right? I'm almost, I was live. So maybe I'll just talk a little bit for Steve to diagnose the issue.
In any event, when I read the list of shifts.
Yes.
It seemed like there was really nothing new there. So correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't we already providing a curriculum that included most of those concepts, just not necessarily organized according to those descriptions?
In some respects, yes. I would say where there's the biggest shift is depth as opposed to breadth. So we did all of those things, but in some cases, we did it while covering a lot of content that far deep. And the emphasis now is to go much deeper and focus on things for a longer time. Example, in the past, it would have been really common for students to read either a chapter in a text or an excerpt from a novel or a whole story and answer a series of comprehension questions and have a small group or classroom conversation and move on to the next. What happens now is that students may interact and engage with that excerpt or story, whatever it is, for days at a time. And the reason that we do it in a repeated fashion is that the first time, we might really just be trying to get the gist of what the author's message is. Another time, we might be trying to really get at how this text compares to another on a similar topic. So if we're talking about immigration, we might read three or four or five different things several times and try to pull from those information, but also encourage students to have a deep enough understanding so that they can also create an argument of their own to support a position that's supported by facts or by statements that are made in the text. So the level of complexity and the depth of knowledge that students are required to use in order to work through those modules is probably the most significant change.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Just a quick one. Greer, I thought when you talked about the professional learning developments, you talked about Generation Ready consultants. I heard, and I don't want to put this as words in your mouth, but I heard that the goal was to have all students reading on grade level by the end of second grade.
The goal, as we wrote it in the technology plan, is 85%.
That's why later on, that 85% number came up. That's why I was wondering what the...
Yeah, 85% is the way we wrote it in the technology plan.
Which makes more sense to me, because we're talking all students, which means all those students, including those with disabilities and...
Yeah.
The question now, the grade level...
That's 86, though.
We're talking at actual grade levels, we're not talking ages or, you know...
Right. We're talking about the benchmarks that are assigned at each grade level, yes. Not, so if a student who is in a self-contained classroom, for example, is chronologically 10, but, well, we don't discriminate, or we don't, not discriminate, we don't separate that out. My special ed hat is now back on. So years ago, we might have had students in ungraded classrooms. In Hyde Park, our students at the elementary level are all assigned a grade that, in most cases, coincides directly with their chronological age. So we would be talking about the benchmark for the grade to which that student is assigned.
Okay.
Sorry if I stumbled over that. Was it clear?
I understood what you're saying.
Did I get there?
Now, I'm not sure I agree, but I understand.
Right, understood.
New York State was on a waiver for the special education students, and it was denied.
Right.
I had an observation. It seemed like there was more flexibility spoken of in the English section than in the math.
Yeah.
And I'm a little confused, well, not concerned, if there's 12 modules and we're not doing them. I always, people sell Common Core as a cumulative thing that you build upon each year as you go along.
Yes.
So if we're not doing all the modules, how are we building...
Great. I'm so glad you asked that question. So in grades three through five, we will continue to do all of the modules, and the teachers really understood that spiraling as well. At the elementary level, at the K-2 level, we're not talking about all of literacy instruction. The Listening and Learning Domains are one piece of a balanced literacy model. So we have guided reading, we have readers and writers workshop, and we have listening comprehension through interactive read-alouds. The Listening and Learning modules or domains are just that one listening comprehension piece. And what we have said to the teachers is that you absolutely still need to do interactive read-alouds and develop listening comprehension on a regular basis. The flexibility we're giving them is that, once a quarter, you will do one complete domain as written, start to finish. The rest of the time, you can choose other literature, other resources that complement what you're doing in your classroom, as long as, you know, they'll continue to address the standards, they'll support the literature that's being read in guided reading. So the expectation for the practice has not changed. The flexibility for the materials is what has changed. And, you know, I mentioned that we're going to continue to monitor and evaluate, and we may very well in another year, work back toward doing more of them. Greer?
Yeah, only because we've all been part of these conversations. The 12 Listening and Learning units, teachers still have the flexibility to use those passages as well. So even though we're saying four, one per quarter, what we heard from many teachers was, they didn't want to do the whole workbook, start to finish with the assessments and every single component. But we did hear from many teachers that there were certain pieces of each that they may go back and grab as a component of their interactive reading, but that they didn't have to do the whole thing, start to finish.
Yeah. And Doug, one of the reasons that we made that decision is that through all of our observations and conversation, as we looked at that whole balanced literacy model, we came to the conclusion that to some degree, not in every case, but to some degree, our guided reading was suffering as a result. So that time where teachers are working very intimately with a small group of students on books at their level was not happening with the same kind of integrity that we would have expected. And we felt that if we needed to really put our emphasis in one place more than another, we needed to return to the workaround guided reading and really make sure that teachers are assessing students, using that data to guide instruction, having students involved in really appropriate activities when they're not sitting with the teacher. It honestly just came down to the phrase, "Something needs to give." All of it's important, but we needed to place a very clear, heavy priority in one area over another, and that's a decision that we made.
Okay. I think we should have this conversation more often, because I'm hearing that what people, you know, dislike Common Core for the most is that it requires certain things that handcuffs the teacher, and the teacher can't do what they used to do, and blah, blah, blah. And I think this is a healthy description of how that, while there are modules to do, there is flexibility within that curriculum and that it's important that the people who say, "We don't want Common Core because it handcuffs the teacher," that that's not really true.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And again, that was part of what happened, was we responded to teacher feedback, because really, to get through the first year of implementation, we did handcuff, if you want to use that term, I don't like that term, but we did mandate that they go through all of the modules and the Listening and Learning Domains, go through them all this year. And based on their feedback, they said, "You know what? That's impossible and not appropriate. I've been teaching, you know, you heard Margaret, you know, I've been teaching for, you know, 20 some odd years." And so what was healthy about our process was, we modified the program based on teacher feedback. I was at two faculty meetings where it was 100% consensus that something had to give. that something had to give and flexibility. And then, under Core's department, they actually went back to the teachers and say, "okay, well, what does make sense?" And so I think we landed in a good spot. So yeah, we didn't, we didn't just say, "okay, no, you know, keep going with this." We actually heard their feedback, responded to their feedback, and made them part of the process for revising it.
Yeah, and I think we struck a good balance between, "okay, do whatever you like," and "do it exactly this way every day in every classroom across the district, so they all look the same." You know, there needed to be a balance struck, and I think, at least for this year, that we landed in a good place.
Not to prolong this too much, but that begs the question of how the children perform on tests, then. You know, if you allow flexibility, and they don't do it well.
Right.
Or if they do better, even, that would be even better, but...
Yeah. Well, and depending on, you know, which school of thought we ascribe to, some would say that if we did phys ed every day for all of our kids, that would increase test scores. Some would say if we did more play, K-five, that would increase test scores. So, you know, all, right, you know, I would vote for both of those things. So, it's so difficult to identify exactly what step will get us there.
That's where it's going to wind up.
Right, right.
And then you throw into the mix all the...
At the end of the day, somebody's going to say, "well, how'd you do on the test?"
I know. Yeah. And all of you will ask that question, and it's a fair question.
Right. And that's when you'll say, "oh, I'm sorry, I only have ten minutes."
Yeah. Well, and then you throw into the mix all the test refusals, and the fact that one of the biggest outcries is that the students couldn't finish the test. So then, then, do we really have, you know, so if you take, and what we heard was, like, for many of our really bright students, if they're not finishing the test, then do we really know where they are in ability level versus ability to finish the test level? So, the test isn't calibrated to say, "how well did they do on the portion that they took?" So it's, the whole thing is, we need the state to work with us here, and they keep telling us that the test refusal movement is a superintendent leadership issue, and not a state education department issue, so...
We have to make it their issue.
They seem to overlook that.
I was actually thinking about this this morning. You know, the board's been together a long time. We're kind of insulated ourselves, I think. We don't reach out as much as we might, or other boards might do as far as going to the, I know you do, but maybe some of us should go with you, you know, and show support in that. That, yes, we love Hyde Park, we think it's great, and we would like to keep everybody out, but that we have to live with the rules that the state has come down with that we might not agree to, and maybe we should be more vocal in our support of change.
Okay, thanks, Core.
You're welcome.
Okay. Twelve point three, the one we've been waiting all night for.
Okay, and as Elliot's coming up to the podium, this is a follow-up, and unfortunately, this is exactly where Elliot and our team of architects and engineers had predicted. If you recall, we went out for a vote last September, and were successful in getting the vote.
For the, I think, for the Havlin heating system?
For the Havlin heating system. We learned early on that the state education department had downsized significantly their review team for all capital projects. And we learned early on that instead of the typical review time for capital projects, we had an open-ended, have-no-Idea-when-we-will-get-to-this-at-the-state-level. I met several times with Mr. Curlander, with Mr. Garcia. There were several times where we reached out to state education department directly. And then finally, you'll recall, about a couple of months ago, I sent a letter on behalf of our district, and we pretty much copied the world because our project was still not approved, and we were talking about a heating project for a seventy-five-year-old building. And so, the last time Elliot spoke, he said that there was a really good chance that the money that we had asked the voters for would no longer be what would come through in the bid process. The closing date of our bids was today, and all of the bids did come in over. And so we are now in a situation that, due to the delay of review in the state education department, coupled with an economy where construction companies are back at work, houses are being sold. So, we extended the bid process because our people who were going to respond said they needed more time for the mechanical portion. You, again, another indication that people are back at work, we had less people bid. But the long and short is that Elliot's going to explain where we are in space and time between September 2014, and where we are today as a district needing to get this heating project approved, started, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Rechek. This is my presentation from this past May, and I did want to review the timeline with you. And actually, before, just to recap, we're talking about Phase 4A3. This is the mechanical systems part of the project, the equipment that makes heat, moves air through our buildings. Phase 4A1, the circulation functions...
And I'm going to interrupt just for our audience, and, you know, again, the earlier phases, thanks to voter approval, have already been completed, and they all came in on time, under budget, because we got our state approval. So first and foremost, I want to thank the voters for getting the pieces of this in place, but we are now down to the last phase. So yes, we have the boilers, we have the pumps, we've got the doors and the windows, but we are down to the last piece, so.
That's right. So we're focused now on the third piece of this larger project, which we did not get approval for until May of this past year, or this current year. I just wanted to share, to go back to the timeline, and even before, we talk about when we sent these plans to state education, this project was conceptualized over the winter of school year thirteen, fourteen. If you recall, we had some pretty substantial emergency repairs done that winter to Havlin Middle School that really illuminated the need for this project. So, the project's scope was conceptualized at the end of 2013. The beginning of 2014, we started building the spec and the scope of this project, which was eventually sent to state ed for approval, after the voters approved it in September of last year. And just some highlights, as Dr. Rechek alluded to earlier. She sent a letter back in January. February, we had follow-up correspondence from Mr. Curlander. March, I mean, every month, we were reaching out to state ed to try to push this along. Our original intent was to get approval by March, so that we could have started the work in May, or in March to award by April to start the work in May, so we can get this project done. We were hoping that by the time we're here talking to you today, it would be halfway done in preparation of the students coming in September. Unfortunately, our SED approval was delayed until May of 2015. So, the current status really hasn't changed, except for the fact that we opened the bids today, and the numbers came in high. Because we opened them just this afternoon, we're not in a position to share what those numbers are just yet, as we still have to vet the contractors and vendors that did submit bids. But every single one of them is a little bit higher than we wanted it to be, and outside of our comfort zone. If you remember, when I gave this presentation in May, we had told, or I shared with the board, that we anticipated a five to seven percent increase to the cost of the project. We're in that ballpark. We're not way over budget, but we're over budget enough where we, even if we started to trim and cut back here and there, I mean, we're really lean on this project in terms of scope. And we're in a position right now where, should the vendors be vetted, and the numbers shake out as we anticipate, we're going to be over budget, and we're going to need to find another funding source.
So the difference is two months' delay in the approval from SED. Expected in March, and we got it in May.
No, well, we were hoping for last November, December, and when it didn't come, we started our campaign of letter writing.
We didn't submit till November.
We submitted in November. We were hoping for a ninety-day turnaround, expedited review, wasn't possible, given the backlog.
I'm just going back to what you just mentioned. If we got the bids in March, the project would be on its way right now.
We were, when we were told the backlog, when we submitted in November, that backlog didn't stay true to what it was...
No, I'm not going there. Let me explain myself a little better. You mentioned if we got them in March, if we got the approval in March, we would have started this summer.
Correct.
Now, probably.
We could have been turning screws already, yes.
Rather than May, because of two months, but that probably didn't do anything with the pricing, two months. So you probably wouldn't be starting in the summer, because you went over bid.
Okay.
So, it doesn't really come into play at this point.
For us, we felt that the pricing was not just affected by the amount of days elapsed, but the fact that we were really shooting for a, being able to put this out to bid during the winter, when a lot of companies are going and planning their summer work. And we felt that the delay, not just in terms of natural price inflation, but the fact that by May, all these vendors had their summer work already booked, and we felt...
Yeah, but you're booking for next year also. One of your bids was the alternate to start up next year.
That's correct.
So those numbers were high, too.
Yeah, they were.
That, I mean, that, I mean, looking at pricing that is for next year's work, is building in, I mean, they've got to be anticipating increases in union wages and everything else that, I mean, start, continues to escalate that price. I mean, there was, there was some, as I understand, there was an alternate to try to start early.
Yeah, actually, and again, I don't feel comfortable sharing numbers that haven't been vetted, but the progression of the numbers, as they played out in the bids today, showed similar, if not lesser, costs for next year for the delay.
Yeah, not much difference, right.
So, it really wasn't the difference that we anticipated it might be. But again, depending on how busy a vendor is, some added numbers for the delay, some deducted.
Yeah, depending on what their workload was.
Correct.
How did we make out as far as estimating on the first two phases? On the pumps and on the windows?
The pumps were estimated at a hundred thousand, and they came in at a hundred and three, and we just processed a change order for a fifteen thousand dollar reduction at the close of the project. So we came in under budget, and on time on the pumps. We had an allowance of three hundred thousand for the doors and windows, we came in at two fifty. We chose to not take alternates to save money for the third phase, wisely, I think. But we came in under budget on that, and they have started on time. They're in progress currently.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Elliot.
Okay.
So, just to follow up, we had anticipated a need to bring the board back together for a July meeting, July twenty-second. And so, the only topic for that board meeting will be this capital project. And maybe some, if anything, personnel comes up last minute.
Good, thank you.
I don't know if this is the time to say it, but I'd like to request that the, somebody from the architectural firm, as well as the construction manager firm, show up for that meeting.
Yes, I think they both plan on being here for that meeting. In fact, we all coordinated our calendars together for that one. And we'll just double-check, but that was how it was planned, yeah.
Okay, at this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose. Thank you. Anybody would like to address the board? Please step up to the mic. Nobody? Okay. All right, going once, going twice. May I have a motion to exit public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I don't believe we have anything to discuss during, on fourteen oh one, board discussion. May I have a motion for fifteen oh one, our consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, or they on this one?
Yes.
Yeah. You want to...
Yes, we would like to welcome and introduce Mary Ann Silke, our new assistant principal at Havlin Middle School. And Lynette will be our new assistant principal, ten-month at FDR High School, so welcome her. I already spoke about Linda, and...
Okay.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to talk about fifteen point ten, the personnel issues. I do think we need to explain to the voters, because in the budget presentation, we said we were hiring a dean of students at the high school, and instead, we're hiring assistant principal at an increased cost of the district. So I think we do have to explain to the voters why that is. Lynette, she interviewed wonderful, and she does seem very much as an assistant principal, but we are doing something different than what we said. So I think the voters need to hear.
Should I take it?
Yep.
Well, a couple of things surfaced. One is that teaching salaries really preclude people from applying for a dean of students positions, because the salary range we were looking at for a dean of students was comparable to a teacher. So to leave the security of a tenured teaching job for a non-tenured dean of students' ten-month position, especially in light of the fact that, you know, we had the position, we cut the position. So that was one factor. Finding a candidate who was qualified and willing to make that leap into administration for a salary that, in some cases, was less than what they were making as a teacher, was definitely a consideration. One of the things that we discussed was the fact that the dean of students' position is a job that is this big. The assistant principal adds another component on that, and that's why there's a higher salary. For example, the biggest difference is that the dean of students, as per our job description, which was negotiated, cannot evaluate teachers. And with the whole teacher evaluation system in place, hiring an assistant principal not only gives us a dean of students, but also permits us to access that administrator for one of the most valuable things that an administrator can do to effect changes in teaching and learning, and that's to evaluate and observe teachers and to conduct walkthroughs. The other thing it gives us is that, by virtue of the job description saying that they couldn't evaluate, one of the big functions that we really looked at with the dean of students, and a big part of the dialogue was all about the safety and security. And we put into place a number of years ago, the security monitors and the whole safety team. And because the job description said they couldn't evaluate, they couldn't even evaluate those positions. So we really want the dean of students to wrap their arms around all the student-centric pieces that we had with our former dean of students. And now, we had the opportunity, and maybe we're forced with the opportunity, to say that we really needed to bring in an assistant principal, because this, and now we get the added benefit. So, I guess it was, we were fortunate when we had the dean of students that we had it before, that we had an in-house person that could make that leap. And that just wasn't what we were, what we were experiencing with this job search.
But her primary role will be dean of students.
Absolutely, yes.
And I'd like to also add that I believe that, I certainly saw during the interview, a unique set of skills that Lynette brings to the high school that's really necessary. So, I think this is a great hire. I expect big things, and I think we're going to see it. Okay, all in favor? Oppose, thank you. That brings us down to special education placements. I have a motion for sixteen oh one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend its adoption as presented.
Any discussion? Other discussion? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. And bring to sixteen oh two, may I have a motion for the consultant agreement for special education services, please, as designated in the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. Opposed, thank you. I have a motion for, let me just move this down a little bit. Sixteen oh three, agreement with Corbits for our technology.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. And I have a motion for sixteen oh four, agreement, consult agreement with Charles Winters. Help us in the transition to the new financial arrangements here, business office.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion for sixteen oh five, agreement with Cape.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion on sixteen oh six, the renewal of the superintendent's contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention how, what a great pleasure it is to work with Dr. Recheck and Commander on the great work that she's done for the district.
Thank you, Steve. I think we all would agree with that.
Sure.
All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion for sixteen oh seven, approval of the guidance plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion for sixteen oh eight, the special education district plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. Our favorite ones. I have a motion for sixteen oh nine, authorization to correct errors on the tax rolls.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. I have a motion for sixteen ten, the transfer from Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund. This is a, an item recommended by our external auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. May I have a motion for sixteen eleven, the CSA memorandum of agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Other than we thank them for settling with us, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, CSA.
And I, I do want to say that this is a rare instance, because it is just, you know, seven days past, where, you know, it doesn't start tomorrow, it will start as of June thirtieth. And I really just want to say thank you to Shirley Turk, the president of the CSEA, for, you know, just coming to the table with a willingness. And also, this is the third contract that we've settled this year. We only have four bargaining units, and as a district, we have settled three of our bargaining unit contracts without going into negotiations. We did not need to pull, really, our negotiating team together once, which means an extraordinary savings in attorney's fees. But more importantly, really just a, a, a good healing, building, bonding year, when you do not have to go through contentious contract negotiations. And I know that in my lifetime, it will not happen again, that we settle three, three contracts in one year without negotiation. So I just, I really want to thank the unit leaders of all three bargaining units, and because it's on the agenda tonight, I'm sorry, I was in the middle of doing something else, but Shirley Turk for, for working with us.
Okay, all in favor? And opposed, thank you. The next one is sixteen twelve, HPTA memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion that has to do with the fact that the nurses are part of the teachers' union, but they have a different schedule, and we've fixed that also, so.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, sixteen thirteen, hopefully everybody's read the revisions of Policy twenty-two forty-five, student member of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Yeah, just wanted to kind of encourage, now that it's been passed, let's move it along since the school year starts.
Yep, absolutely.
Don't want to be seating a student board member in April, you know, so.
Well, I hope we see him in April, but I hope we see him in September as well.
Seating them in April.
Oh, okay.
I don't mean seeing, I mean seating them.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to be ready to roll with that on day, opening day for students, which is mid-September.
Right, and that's why we kind of give the marching, we want to get the marching orders lined up, so everybody knows what's expected, so.
I'm good with doing that at the special meeting, maybe we can. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with putting that on the agenda for the special meeting. Right, this is just the first.
No, that was the second.
This is done. This is the adoption, okay.
It's done.
And it lays out the plan of how we're going to formulate the committee.
So they, they know what they need to do now.
All right. Okay.
Which I know they can't until school opens, but at least they know from day one what they can do.
Okay. I have a motion for public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Second shot here, anybody want? Everybody who wants to go home? I have a motion to exit public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed, thank you. There are no other matters necessary by the board. So board subcommittee reports? I don't think we've had any. Do we have any subcommittee, any subcommittees since the last meeting? I don't think so, so. Upcoming meetings will be next one, July twenty-second, here in the district office.
What time we doing that?
We should do it at six, or five, five exec. We just, oh, we're just having the meeting at five? No.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, well, I, I have something I gotta do that evening up in Reinbeck, so.
Earlier the better?
I mean, obviously, accommodating what other people are able to do, otherwise I won't be able to make it, so.
Okay.
I won't be able to make it that day.
No matter what, so it doesn't matter what we do with the time.
Okay, so the meeting will be five thirty. Five thirty is good.
It's not expected to be a long one, right?
No.
I think I can pull off five thirty.
Okay, the meeting will be at five thirty?
Perfect.
July twenty-second, here in the district office.
Yes.
Good catch, Steve. Again, this was, we made sure we were coordinating with our architect and.
There is no need for another executive session? We could have one if you. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I know, I would like to thank Steve and Perry for running again. And it, I think the stability of this board has resulted in significant accomplishments, and I could rattle off a list that's extensive, but, so thank you for running again, and congratulations, and congratulations again to Dan and Doug for your leadership and your continued leadership, and for the entire board. And I know I said some few, few words at graduation, that this is community service at its best, and you make a tremendous difference. And I think we're in a great place because of the stability of this board.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourned? We're adjourned.